Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the town of Burlington will be holding the September 7th, 2023 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March 12th, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but note while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with a particular interest in a specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend remotely may do so via townofberlincolnwebx.com. Our meeting number is 233-5740-3784. And you can join us by phone at 1617-315-0704. The meeting is being broadcast on BCAT Government Channel, which can be found on Comcast Channel 99, RCN 15, and Verizon Channel 41, which is being streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Government Facebook page. Members of the public looking to participate remotely, raise your hand in the WebEx, and staff will send you a request to unmute yourselves.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is announcements.
Sure, Caleb?
Yes, so, starting tonight, this Thursday, and then the next three Thursdays for the rest of September, the Town Center Community Beer Garden Local Business Spotlight will be happening, and that's at the Pocket Park right in downtown at 202 Cambridge Street. The Zoning Bylaw Review Committee will meet next Wednesday, September 13th, at 6:30, and that will be via Zoom. And I want to share my screen that the Conservation Department, let's see, let me get it up, has created a very helpful webpage about sustainable landscape handbook for residents, and it's full of information for ideas and recommendations that you might have. So definitely check this out. This is under the Conservation's website. On the side there, there's a panel for sustainable landscaping, so there's a lot of information. If you have any other questions, please reach out to the Conservation Department. Next, Eversource will be having office hours regarding their proposal for a new substation. They're doing that at True North Coffee House. They're doing that next Tuesday, the 12th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and then September 21st from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Truck Day is happening September 19th, and that will be at the Town Common from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM that day. Household Hazardous Waste Day, that is September 23rd, and that will be from 8:30 AM to noon, and that's at the Fox Hill School. And September Town Meeting will be happening on the 27th of this month, and that begins at 7 o'clock at Burlington High School Auditorium.
Thank you.
It is on a Wednesday this year, not on a Monday, so just remember that.
Yes. I'm going to add also, there is a Sculpture Park meeting on Wednesday, September 13th, at 8:30 AM via WebEx. All are welcome. Next item on our agenda is public participation. If there is anyone here in this room or online that would like to speak on a matter that is not on our agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on. We do not have any legal notices or nonapproval, so we will move on to administrative matters. Item 5A is a discussion, release of lot for building purposes. Six Dartmouth, Lot 6, General Walker Estates, definitive subdivision. Waypoint Companies is the applicant. Who is here representing Waypoint? Can you come forward, please, and have a seat at the table? And I'm going to ask you to repeat that into the microphone.
Afaf Georgis.
Okay. All right, who wants to update us?
Sure, so at the last Planning Board meeting, the subdivision was, there was an extension on the subdivision. There are certain timelines by which they have to be built, but, you know, circumstances being what they are, this board chose to extend it. Now they're seeking to release a lot for building purposes. So, you know, things that we had talked about at the last meeting include kind of maintenance of the cul-de-sac island, kind of updates on streetlights, and then kind of timeline for completion. So, thank you. Staff.
Thank you. Afaf, could you update us on those items?
Sure, so as far as the timeline for completion, we figure one year that should get us all done and complete and off the subdivision. As far as the streetlight, it's in the design process with Eversource right now. We do have conduit ready to go. Eversource does have the wire set up. We just need the okay from them to run the wire from the streetlight to our handhold. And once they approve their design, then we'll be able to connect. As far as the roadway is concerned, the final coat is on, and the granite is in, and everything is there. The, I think one of the questions was asked was where is the house going to sit on the lot? It's going to be at the very top, at least 140 feet away from the road. Because the way the wetlands hampers, it comes out into the lot, so the biggest space available is at the very top, so it'll sit up there. Then, one of the other questions was the old telephone pole was removed back in 2018.
Okay.
So that's all set.
I think the last thing remaining was the maintenance for the, the maintenance for the circle.
Yep, for the, so, I went and cleared it today, at least the circle. It got a little too hot, and I couldn't quite finish it, but we'll go finish the backside, and going forward next week, we'll be out there mowing once a week. And later on, as far as the maintenance in the future, I spoke with Greg. He's joining us in building the last house, so we are going to put a birch tree and some other plantings, and probably either mulch it or stone it, so we don't have to worry about the weeds and worrying about anybody to cut the grass and all of that.
Can we somehow get that written in?
Yep.
To this, because I like the idea of the birch tree. That sounds like it would be nice to have there. And I'm glad that you were able to mow, and I'm glad you didn't faint in the heat today, because it was bad. So the ongoing maintenance plan will be during construction, Mr. Hickok?
Hickok, yep.
Mr. Hickok will be responsible. After that, who will be responsible? I know at some point you'll probably want the town to accept the roadway.
Yes.
At which point, the town would be responsible, but until that happens?
We'll maintain it. I mean, I'm sure with stone or mulch down on that island, it'll just, yeah, less maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Board members, does anyone have any questions on this matter?
I do. What's the timeline that you have to get that streetlight operational? Do they give you a timeline?
At Eversource.
Right, so my concern would be?
As soon as it gets out of design, which could take anywhere from one month to six months. I don't know how far behind they are. I know in the past, we've had some delays in our projects because of the Eversource design team. So I would say, once it's accepted, as soon as I can get my electrician there, could take anywhere from one week to one month in getting them there.
Staff, can we put something in the decision that, you know, that they can't take occupancy of the house, or they can't sell the house, or anything along those lines until that's done? Because if this house is done and they walk away, there's no, we know how Eversource can.
Well, we do still have, we still have a bond out on the street. Which includes the light and all of that, so if we want our bond back, then yes, we have to complete the streetlight.
Okay. And then, did you have a plot plan of some sorts so we can visualize where exactly that house is in relation to?
We can bring it up. Available.
My computer will load.
Yeah.
I'm sorry? I can't wait. I can't wait. I'll let my clients know.
Well, we know they can't hear you at home unless you speak here, and I think people would like to hear what your plans are.
No, I'm saying like when I spoke with, you know, that street should be beautiful. There's no reasons it shouldn't be, so I'm excited. I'm going to bring my team up there, we're going to finish the house, we'll put it, the way the lot sits, it's going to have to sit on the top of the hill. It's going to be a nice grand house, we're going to finish the plans. Soon as we get it released, we can start. But at the end, I already introduced myself to the neighbor, Sam, and we talked, told him I'll help him with some trees at the end for some privacy. So when we leave, we'll clean it up, and it looks beautiful. Unfortunately, I spoke with the neighbors, nobody wants to cut the circle, just for reference in the future, so we'll have to put some crushed rock and some trees and just make it look pretty, you know? But I'll cut it, we'll have a cut and maintain till that house is done, you know?
Great, okay, so this is?
This is the subdivision plan, and so you can see the circle, and this is the lot.
Yes.
Is that approximately where it will sit?
It'll sit up a little bit higher.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, okay, so it'll be even further toward?
Further back, yes.
A little further back.
The, in permitting, is the new plot plan for the house.
Oh, perfect, okay, excellent, perfect.
So that we've received?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So who's going to, who will actually own that island?
So technically speaking, it's going to be part of the homeowners agreement.
Okay. So the homeowners can, in the future, if they wanted to do grass, you know, like ornamental grasses or whatever they want to do, they'd be able to do in there anyway.
Yes, yes, I think it will be part, that's how it's been done in the past.
And if the street is accepted by the town? Oh, okay. So is that going to be written in the decision as well?
It is, it already is in the subdivision.
Thank you.
I mean, I can only say that I'm very familiar with the builder, and he's, there isn't a better builder around, so, you know, he's reliable and does what he says and says what he does.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else?
A question for staff. Has engineering reviewed the bond to make sure that it is sufficient to complete?
Yes, they have. They've also reviewed everything on the roadway, and they say that the roadway is complete and to their standards as currently ranked. So, I drove by there yesterday, and the road looks good.
Thank you.
Yep, of course.
Okay, is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on this matter? Anyone online that would like to speak on this matter? Do we see anyone?
I don't see any hands raised right now.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to, for the Planning Board hereby release Lot 36 Dartmouth Road, General Walker Estates, definitive subdivision from the conditional approval covenant endorses a Form G certificate of compliance for said lot as requested by the applicant on the email dated August 11, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 7-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a continued discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change, 186 Middlesex Turnpike, Lifetime Fitness is the applicant. Who is here representing Lifetime?
I'm Chris Weiner.
Welcome. Please have a seat, and I know, we know you, Connor, but if both of you could speak into the microphone and introduce yourselves to the public, that would be great.
Connor Nagel with BHB, the engineer for the project.
Chris Weiner, Lifetime, Burlington.
Thank you. Okay. Why don't you bring us up to date, staff, on where things stand, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Weiner.
So this project originally came to us earlier in the summer, and they were proposing to build out, I think it was 40 spaces?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine spaces. So when this was originally permitted, there were spaces that were land banks that the Planning Board previously approved, and it was all added to all the stormwater calculations, kind of towards the front of the site by Middlesex Turnpike, those of you that were here. And so now, they've kind of, you know, decided, there's a lot of moving parts, and so they've decided just to go with the land banked spaces. They're just seeking the land banked spaces. And so that's kind of where we stand now. We have received data, because the decision required, you know, if you want to unbank, you need to provide the town with data, so we have data from, swipe data from people entering and exiting, or not exiting, people entering the facility, as well as they also provided us with security camera footage of the parking lot. And so, you know, I think Chris has, you know, he lives it every day, and he, I spoke with him earlier, and I think that, you know, he can add some local color commentary to why this is needed, so with that, I'll look at that.
I'd like to hand it over to Mr. Weiner, but I want to also just, for the board members, I'm not intending that we're going to vote on this tonight, because there's some work that needs to be done on the site, but I'm hoping we can get all the issues out there so that the next time Mr. Weiner comes back, we can be nice and quick and vote. So, Mr. Weiner, please.
Yes, thank you.
What's in on your business?
We appreciate it, and thank you for the feedback. We've already got a lot of work that's been done.
Great.
And then I'm working to finish the rest of it soon. So, yeah, so the last year and a half has been really interesting. We've been extremely busy, which is great, great for business. You know, parking is the number one detractor right now, as far as in and out and just crowding as a whole. So some things that we've done in the last year, on top of pricing changes, so we've increased prices six different times, which?
In one year?
In one year. And it hasn't done anything to the traffic at the time, which is also a great thing for our business as well. We, about eight months ago, we moved our team member parking to unfettered lot that Norblum allowed us to use. So none of our team members currently park in the actual parking lot for the facility. It's unfettered lot to the side that is not leased to anyone or any building. So we did that to help with some of it as well, some of the congestion. And then most recently in July, mid-July, we went to a waiting list only. So members cannot just sign up on their own online or come into the club and join. We fully control membership inside the club at this point. So we're basing it on traffic, we're basing it on any attritions that we have, and we're really trying to make sure that the experience is right for the members that show up, inside as well as outside, which, we're one of the only clubs in the entire nation out of seven for the company that's ever done in over 30 years, which is another great thing to have as well. We've also limited club traffic from other locations. Our price point is also different than all the other locations in Massachusetts, so no longer can someone from another club access Burlington. They would actually have to go to the waitlist as well. So we've done a lot of those things. At one point, we were thinking about valet, to be able to use some of the lots behind Abbott and behind Archer, the big huge spot, but it didn't come to fruition. Norblum was concerned at the time just about other tenants, and who's parking where, and some safety concerns of that nature, so we weren't able to go that direction. So, you know, at this point, the only other challenge, obviously, when the winter comes, we have to move snow, so we truck snow out now. And then obviously, that beautiful Lifetime Living Building, that used to be an open lot that had a spot for about 400 extra people to just park.
So, since you brought it up, you're going to get an influx of new members from that apartment building as well. Do you know when that will be going online and how you'll handle that new influx?
Yeah, so that's in condition of the waitlist now as well, so we're not taking the?
Do you go on the waitlist?
No, they'll actually become members right away. But the condition of the waitlist that we're running, we're taking that into consideration on top of any attritions that we have, so it's built in as well.
So you feel you can accommodate them?
Yeah, 100%. And then, you know, the summer is the busiest time for us, and then it slows up some during the fall and the winter. The challenge with the snow removal is we actually have to remove it. A lot of impervious islands, so you can't just push it somewhere and get it out of the way, because then you're going to take in more parking spots. So we actually shovel, truck, and then remove as much as we can at the time as well, so, yeah.
All right, thank you. Board members, who, anyone have questions? I don't have any questions. Okay, I have a couple.
Yeah, so I wasn't able to do the site walk when you were there, but I did the next morning at 8:30, what you thought was your prime time, and it actually validates what I saw in the pictures there. The top left and the bottom right actually show two clear aisles, and that's what I saw when I was there as well. And one of the clear aisles, which is right down at Middlesex Turnpike, actually had an 18-wheeler in it. So your prime time, you're indicated by the data, same thing here, shows those two clear aisles right along, so the spaces that you have just aren't close to the building, which I think everyone likes, right, to be closer. So, you know, the data points that I see here, the data point that I saw personally, you know, there were spaces available, there were free aisles available, so that's just my input from there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a few questions as well. I share Bill's observations. I've been, I don't live far at all from your business, so I've made a point of driving by frequently at your busy times, at your not busy times. I've never seen it full. What I do see is just that row of spaces that are closest to Middlesex Turnpike. So my concern is, I mean, I've seen the data, I've seen the pictures, I agree that you are close to capacity, and that can be problematic. My concern is that if you are putting in the land banked spaces, they will be the furthest spaces from your building, and I'm concerned that in a short period of time, you will still be getting complaints from your customers saying there are no spots, because there are spots, they're just not the spots they want. So I want to make sure that that's something you're considering. I do believe there's an opportunity for you to put the spaces closer to your building, but I understand there's additional cost associated with that. I want to make sure that you understand that if you decide to go this route and put those spaces there in the front, there isn't going to be an opportunity to add more spaces next to the building in the near future, just because people don't want to walk.
Understood.
Okay, so I just wanted to make that clear. I had some questions also about, how many employees do you have working at any given time, say at your peak? How many employees are in the building?
This time of year, post-summer, at the peak time of day, we could be between 65 and 85 at one time.
And how many spaces do you have at that lot behind the pool?
About 90.
Okay, good. That's good. Okay. That answers my questions. Is there anyone in the audience, either in the room or online, who has questions on this matter?
I see one hand raised. I will request to unmute. Pop on the screen. See, there should be a pop, there you go.
Okay, hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Hi, my name is Ziwei, I'm a town meeting member from Person 5, and also a member of Land Use Committee. I've been following this Lifetime's proposal, and I also brought back to our Land Use Committee, we talked about it. So I have a couple of questions and comments. When you guys say like a land banking, and I believe this was approved like 20, 16, 17 years ago or something, and then that means if we approved back then, so we have to approve this time? But I just want to say, this is a question for the board. But then, I want to say, in the past seven years, there are many things changed. Our town changed, the climate changed, and I drive on that road all the time. Whenever it rains, there's always puddles in front of that green space that, you know, you call land banking area. So if we turn that green space into more like impervious parking lot, wouldn't be more water getting in the Middlesex Turnpike? You know, even across the road is a windbreak, you know? So I believe it's also within their 200-feet buffer zone, but then I just don't think it's a great idea to turn that green space into more parking lot, and that they only get like 19 spaces. But, you know, like honestly, I think it looks better with that green space, and they don't really gain that many more parking spot for customers. I think also, if we, this also question for our board, if we do land banking for Lifetime, to be fair, for all the commercial business and the residents, that means like all other business, commercial and residents could do the same thing? You know, they reserve some land banking, like then 10 years later, they ask, you know, for, you know, what am I trying to say? I don't know.
Let me address your concerns, they're very good questions. So, the reason why this business had those 19 spots land banked was because when they first came before us, they wanted all of those parking spaces, and this board said, we think that's too many and you don't need them. So as a compromise, we said, we have them on the plan, but we want that to be green space, and if at some point in the future you can prove that you need those spots, then you can have them. So it was sort of, and we've done this with other businesses as well, when there are, perhaps there's a, we don't believe the business needs as many parking spots as they claim to need, and we want to see how the business operates once it's up and running, and see if they really need those spaces. So it's available in the beginning of a negotiation, when the business comes to the board, it's not something that any business can raise their hand now and say, hey, I want land banked parking spaces. Does that answer your question about land banking?
Yes, it does, thank you. And then there's no year limit, they could come back like whenever, however many years later.
They can come back whenever, but they have to? Prove that there's a need for the spaces. So, and then when it comes to the drainage questions, I'd actually like to ask the engineer, Connor, to address that if possible, how you can, can you talk to us a little bit about how the drainage will work once those new spaces are put in?
Sure.
To make sure that it's not running out into the street.
Yep. When this was originally designed, it was designed with the parking there, the drainage is installed for that parking. The base layer of stone that would be under the pavement is in place with landscape and topsoil on it with seed. That would just be scraped off and paved if this was approved. The stormwater is all in place for that. The impervious cals and treatment cals at the time assumed all that was pavement, so everything is in place there. The entire site is curbed as any paved site is, so our stormwater is contained on-site and directed to infiltration systems on the site. Nothing goes to Middlesex Turnpike. I believe the lady was talking about ponding in Middlesex Turnpike itself. We will not be contributing to that. Our curbing at the edge of pavement, if it was expanded, would stop any water going towards Middlesex Turnpike and turn it back into the drainage system.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Wayne, does that address your question?
Yes, thank you. Okay, I understand that now. But it come to like, you know, they only like gain like 19 spaces by turning that up, you know, this land banking into parking spots. I was wondering, you know, how like, how much, they describe how crowded they are, wouldn't it make more sense if Lifetime actually build a garage, you know, then turn more of their current parking space into like a green space, like a, you know, more, planting more trees and native plants, bushes, and build a couple of green gardens? So that case, you know, a garage will satisfy their current customers' need and also their potential customer need, you know, get them more members. In the meantime, make the whole site look nicer, and then make our town actually look nicer, then also, you know, prevent heat island effect and protect the environment. So I'm just saying, like, wouldn't it make sense if they have a garage instead of just take another 19 spaces? So I can say?
So I think, so Wegmans is the only property in the Northwest Park PDD that has structured parking. I believe, off the top of my head, I haven't looked at this in a while, I believe?
I think the hotel or?
The hotel has some underneath, so I'm assuming it's allowed. That being said, when you're building a structured parking garage, I think you're getting in, like each spot? I think you're getting in, like each spot is a hundred, is like over like $100,000 per spot. So it's, and maybe Connor, you can, you know more data on this than I do, but I think that it's a very heavy financial lift for-
Right, and it's a great idea.
Yeah, exactly.
It's something that, if we were at the beginning of this project, would probably be a very important thing for us to consider. We would probably put the parking garage behind the building, not in front of the building, because that's certainly not attractive. But at this stage, where the business is already up and running, it would be, I don't think that we could demand that kind of investment from the developer at this point. Although, I agree with you, it would be lovely if we had planned it that way in the first place. Do any other members have anything to add to that? Yes, Ernie?
Kind of a question and a comment at the same time. Lifetime Fitness Living, I believe most of the parking, if not all, is under the building?
Correct.
Is it all under the building?
167, this is not my purview, but I know the 167 underneath, which is the exact number of units, and I think outside is 70, I believe.
All right, so there's, so once Lifetime Living is operating, there'll be another 70 spaces, surface spaces, that will be committed to them also?
Correct, residents only.
So you'd be losing, those are probably now being used by-
Those were only used originally before the project even started, the green space that was there.
They've already lost those due to the construction.
Yep.
Okay, so they're being eaten up by the construction now. Is there any, I mean, I know we're, as Barbara said, we're kind of at the end, not even in the middle, but is there any consideration that you could think of that there could be some shared parking between Lifetime Living and Lifetime Fitness? I know that's not really the engineer's call, but-
Yeah, I mean, I would not have the answer to that.
I think the problem would also be that the Lifetime residents wouldn't be thrilled to have their parking spaces taken out by gym residents, gym users. Because they have one spot per unit under, and that means each apartment is really only assigned one and a half spaces if you add them all together.
Right.
Those will probably be filled.
Yep. Okay, it should get interesting, let's put it that way.
Certainly is interesting.
They should have started sharing, it'll probably be the living that would be taken somewhere else.
I had a question for staff as well. It has been pointed out by members of the public, and this is not a problem for you, that the light at Fourth Avenue gets very backed up with people trying to turn left. Can we talk to, is it engineering?
I think it would be, I couldn't speak-
About timing that better?
So I, I can, I need to double-check to make sure that's not part of the adaptive system. I can talk to Brian White, our DPW director. I think he was in charge of all the traffic signals before he was promoted. So I can, I can talk to him about that.
Because what we're hearing is that people getting frustrated with that line are going around it and then taking an illegal left into the parking lot. If that were to move faster, hopefully we could eliminate that illegal left.
It's about three and a half cars with a green arrow. It goes quick, really quick.
I'll talk to Brian.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that has a question? Okay, so you know one, I think we want to wait. We're not going to vote on this tonight, we're going to continue it to our next meeting, because you did have some work that you need to do on the side of the building. But I think once that is done, we probably can move pretty quickly at our next meeting.
I have received photos of the side of the building. It does, there is, a fence needs to be kind of, you know, a little bit of repair, but as far as, you know, the rear of the site, it has been-
There's been significant cleanup. What about the COT2 containers or cylinders? They have to be contained, right?
I mean, yes, but I think, you know, I think it's just a matter of hiring a fence contractor and getting it done. I don't know what the time, I don't know what the timing of that is.
It's faster now, since we talked about the options versus the original enclosure.
Yeah.
So, much faster.
Personally, I would feel more comfortable delaying, but if my board members feel otherwise, I am also willing to listen to that. Anyone? Anyone make an argument for voting tonight?
Madam Chair, can I, may I make a motion to continue this matter to the Plenary Board Meeting of October 21st, 2023?
September.
Oh, excuse me, September 23rd. 21st. 21st.
Second.
All those in favor? I oppose abstain. So we'll see you on the 21st. We'll try to put you at the beginning of the agenda to make it a quick night. I appreciate you coming, because we learned a lot from you, now that you've engaged with our team, now that you've met each other, you can stay in more regular contact. I think that we really benefited from hearing directly from you about your business.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Next is Item 6A, a public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to 4.2.6.9, fast-order food establishments of the zoning bylaws, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, the Burlington Mall, OPA Burlington LLC doing business as Greco is the applicant. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Pleased to be here this evening. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with Reema Bronstein, representing OPA Burlington LLC and their affiliate Greco Restaurant. Nick Nicolow is with me here, part of the applicant team. And I know participating remotely, we have Dimitri Solakis, who's a founder of the Greco Restaurant Group. But, so in short, we're here with a special permit application for a new fast casual restaurant concept to open up at the Burlington Mall. I know that Nick and Dimitri are very excited about this location. This actually would be their first suburban location for the restaurant. They have four locations currently, all of which are in Boston, Back Bay, Seaport, downtown area, and one at the Hub Hall, which is part of the TD Garden. If you've been in there, they have a food hall, they have a facility there as well. So this location, thanks Caleb for putting that up, would be to the right of Common Craft. There's a new mall entrance, well, new as in over the past couple of years, it's been part of the former Sears space. Obviously, you can see on the right-hand part of that photo. But in between that mall entrance and Common Craft is the location where Greco Restaurant will be located. As you can see, they actually already have the outdoor patio, which was constructed. This space was always envisioned to be a restaurant as part of the revitalization of the former Sears box. So Greco would locate here. They actually would have an exterior entrance, and they would also have access inside the mall corridor as well for patrons that may want to come into the restaurant from the mall corridor itself. So there'd be 88 seats in total. 54 of the seats would be inside, and then they would have 34 outdoor patio seats as well. So it's a fast casual concept, where you would order at a counter, and, you know, get your meal, and then you'd have an opportunity to sit and enjoy it. So very popular restaurant. I know Greek-inspired cuisine, and they have a following and thrilled about the opportunity to locate here in Burlington. So with that, I don't know, Nick or Dimitri, you want to say something? But I know that this has been a location that you've been eyeing for a while and looking forward to it, so.
Tonight, I actually just started teaching at BU, hospitality, actually. So I had orientation this week, and I would not made it a time. But we're so thrilled to be opening this location in Burlington. We started in 2017 with the first Greco in Back Bay, where we served really authentic, truly Greek food with gyros, plates, salads, customizable, a lot of vegetarian, vegan options, and really something for everyone. And the suburbs were always on our radar. In Burlington, we always wanted to do something due to the families that are out there, the other businesses, and you really can't forget a reservation at many of the restaurants in the area. So data's looking really promising. But other than that, you know, we also operate full-service restaurants. Nick and myself, we're cousins, and we grew up in the restaurant business. So it's a passion of ours, and, you know, hospitality and Greek food. So we're just thrilled at the opportunity to bring our brand to Burlington.
Thank you. Okay, staff, did you have anything you wanted to add before I turn it over to the board?
I don't. Everything is all set on our end, we're very comfortable with this.
Okay, board members, anyone? Joe?
So the, there's no service at the tables at all. It's all, you take it and bring it back. Bring it outside, so it'll be seasonal, obviously, outside, right? Correct. And is it, is there, is there access? How close is the outdoor seating from the drive aisles?
There's the pocket park is in front of it.
Okay, so it's tucked behind it?
Yeah, 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 it's definitely-
Fair distance, shall we?
The Common Craft scene is similarly protected.
Okay, good.
I have just a few questions. You have a liquor license, I assume? No?
No, we will not have a liquor license.
So I was wondering if there will be the ability for people to travel sort of in between Common Craft and your outdoor seating? Because they're there with their beer options and not very many food options, and there you are with your food, it might make a nice complimentary use. I don't know if there's, is there a fence between those two outdoor seating areas?
I believe-
There is a current fence.
There is a fence, and I think it, it might be problematic, Barbara, to merge them just-
Because of the liquor license.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So I think there needs to be some separation from the ABCC requirements, but-
I understand.
But it does adjoin, but separated by a fence.
So just a word of caution, if you intend to have umbrellas outside over your outdoor seating, we don't allow for signage on the umbrellas. And if you have TVs outside, they need to face in, not out. These are just things that we've learned over the years, sometimes crop up after the fact. Any other questions, board members?
Just a quick question, so Mark, and I get it, there's probably an issue with the liquor license, probably to allow the liquor to leave the site, but the other way around probably wouldn't be an issue, right? If the Greek people were to get Greek food and go on to the, on to the Common Craft site?
Yeah, so I don't-
Depends on how Common Craft feels. I should say, because it could be a liability for them.
Common Craft has a lot of vendors. They have a lot of different food vendors anyway.
Most restaurants, if you bring outside food, they say either they're not liable or, you know, that they don't allow outside food.
Yeah, so I think that there is a, kind of a common area that's out there in that pocket park, where people play, you know, what the cornhole games or whatnot. So I believe that area is accessible by anyone that wants to utilize it. Is there another photo that might, well, you can kind of see it to the left there, but there is an area that would be, maybe that area might be-
Does that area have access to people with, can alcohol be brought into that area?
I don't believe that area in green is allowed.
We're just trying to figure a way that could combine somehow, but-
Well, it would be a nice benefit, but if they, if they don't have a liquor license, it's probably not going to work.
I mean, it's, you know, it's, they do seem like complimentary uses, but it's just something to think about. You know, they have food halls in Boston, they have a food hall in Lexington? Just throwing it out there?
Yes.
Put on our radar.
And if I get caught carrying my gyro over to Common Craft, you know, that'll be their problem.
She just threw herself under the bus right there.
All right, okay. Is there anyone in the audience, either in the room or online, that would like to ask a question or make a comment on this matter? Jess, please go ahead.
Will people be responsible for throwing out their own trash? Or will there be people making sure the trash outside is taken care of?
Good question.
We will take on that responsibility. I mean, one of us can do it themselves, but we have always a floor supervisor going around, taking trays away and checking in on our guests, part of the hospitality we offer.
Okay, perfect. Great. I'm sorry, anything else, Jess?
Do we know what, or do you know yet what? Because right now, obviously, the wall of the outside of it is just a wall. Will it be like all windows? Will it be like indoor/outdoor? Like, you know, like tavern, you can like open things and it is more inviting? Oh, here we go.
This is a preliminary rendering.
Oh, yeah.
It would be a glass storefront. It's similar to this, but it's not currently open windows. So it's fixed with, you know, an entry door.
Okay. Lovely. And then, assuming there'll be ample lighting out there for when it's dark? Actually, I'm curious, what will the hours be?
We will be Monday through Sunday, 11:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Nice.
Okay.
Anyone else? And we did not see anyone online, did we? When do you anticipate opening?
I'm sorry?
When do you anticipate opening?
You know, if we are successful today, we have our plans ready, submit for permit. And once our permit is approved, we estimate to start construction right away. So we're thinking, you know, Q1, 2024.
Great. Okay, I am ready for a motion. Madam Chair, make a motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero.
Madam Chair, may I further make a motion to approve the request of OPA Burlington LLC doing business as Greco for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.9, fast-order food establishment of Article 4 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Burlington to permit the operation of a fast casual Greek restaurant to be known as Greco for property located in the general business, BG and Aquifier A Districts at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero. Welcome to Burlington.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much, thanks, appreciate it, all right.
I can't wait for a new career.
Yeah, I think it sounds great. Next item is Item 6B, a public hearing, application for approval of a site plan, 92 Middlesex Turnpike, Hanes Group Incorporated is the applicant. Welcome, please have a seat, and please give us your names for the record.
I am Nathan Evans, President of Smith and Walensky Restaurant Group.
Jeff Benavides, Hanes Group, Construction Management.
Thank you. So?
So, this is a very simple application. So the previous restaurant, I think it was Strega that was there, they had a revolving door to enter the building. And I believe that Smith and Walensky wanted to put in a vestibule. It's interior square footage, small, but it's still interior square footage, which means that it reaches a site plan application.
Strega never actually went in there, right?
It wasn't.
It was Del Frisco's.
It was Del Frisco's, correct, yes.
Del Frisco's?
Yeah.
This is the same company that owns Strega, correct?
Yes, 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 my mistake. And so this is a, this is actually a site plan for an interior vestibule. So that's-
No seating, no anything else? It's just someplace where people can come in and the cold air doesn't blast the people that are inside?
Right, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, any questions for the board? Anybody else? Okay, when do you intend to open? I'm just curious.
They're already open, yeah.
I'm behind.
We'd love to see you, Madam Chair, you can come and see us anytime you like.
Okay, I think that's pretty simple.
They did away with these, they used to have grand openings. Or pre-COVID, you know, after COVID, there's no such thing as grand openings anymore.
Since this is a public hearing, let me just check and see if there's anyone online who has a comment or question on this matter. Seeing no one? Madam Chair, make a motion to close a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, seven zero.
Madam Chair, may I further make a motion to approve the request of the Hanes Group Incorporated, the approval of a site plan application for property located at 92 Middlesex Turnpike, which is the premises to remove the current air curtain to add an entry vestibule in front of the door, a double door at the entry with a size of 83 square feet, as reflected on a plan entitled Middlesex Marketplace. Site plan prepared by EBI Consulting dated August 17th, 2012, revised to July 19th, 2023, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
As attached. As attached.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven zero.
Thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I ask a procedural question? Could this be, have been handled as an insignificant change, or is it because of the square footage?
It's because it's an interior square footage. It's, and the other thing is, we do have a site plan waiver process, but it's very similar, and you require a higher vote threshold for it. So it's-
So it's kind of one of those things.
Thank you.
I tried, thank you guys so much.
What is it?
Okay, we do not have any meetings tonight, but we do have to discuss committee assignments, something that we talked about at our last meeting. And so I think we should just run through these. If you're on the committee, tell me that you're on the committee. If you're not on the committee and you are willing to take it on, notice I didn't say if you want to be on, I said if you're willing to take it on, please let me know. So Public Transit Advisory Committee, who's on that?
Would you add like when it's meeting? Because some things are at night and some are during the day.
So I'm not sure, is this, is this even active? I don't think it's active. I don't think it's active.
We're going to put that one on hold.
And if it was active, Jen Jalinas, our admin, would be.
Jump on it.
Would jump all over it.
Oh, great.
Okay. So Board of Appeals Liaison, do we have anybody who's already assigned to that?
I have.
No, the Board of Appeals generally meets on?
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays in the evening? Anyone, anyone want to fight for this?
No, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to ask you all to think about, at the end, we're going to sort of see what's left and I'm going to ask people to pick one, so. Housing Partnership Committee.
I was on that, but it's sort of been on hold and they haven't sort of heard anything.
For us as well, because I know they were.
But I am on that, but I'm waiting for them to stop back up.
That's on hold, so we'll, we'll sort of.
Are they not going to start? Are they not?
I don't know what they're going to do.
We'll see.
We don't know.
Okay, I thought you said Mike was going to chair that, no?
Yes, yes, it's, yeah, so I think the ball is in his court at this point.
Okay.
Okay.
I was going to talk to him at town meeting.
Recreation Commission, that's you, right, Bill?
I'm currently on it. I'm willing to continue, but if anyone else would like to go into the Recreation Commission, it's a wonderful commission and.
You make a ton of money on it.
You make a lot of money.
I don't make any more money than I know.
They don't give you, they don't pay you?
I thought they had a better stipend.
Oh, do they?
Yeah, you get money.
I haven't seen it yet, so.
Your wife is doing a good job there.
Just sign here, Bill.
Check our.
Yeah, have you been signing in every meeting?
When do they meet? I'm just curious.
They're, well, they're typically once a month on Monday nights.
Once a month, nice.
Typically, once or twice, depending on what's on the agenda. But again, open it up to anybody that would like to.
Do we have to vote annually for that? We usually.
Yeah, I think you're right.
No one follows on it, we voted to.
Well, is there anyone who wants that assignment other than Bill? That having been said, let's take a vote right now that we will appoint Bill to the Recreation Commission for another year. All those in favor?
Isn't that just, is that not just the chairman's?
That's what I thought, but they just told me.
Was it? I know, I knew, I know in the past we've actually voted it.
Well, let's just vote and say yay.
Yay.
Because then we don't have to do it again.
Maybe we haven't done it all the time.
Second, move, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, seven zero. Economic Development Committee, I think we have two people on that.
Yeah, Jess, yeah.
Brenda and Jess, thank you both. The Sculpture Park is me. Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Is anybody doing that currently?
So the M A P C is our regional planning agency and they they are kind of, they look at, they make the Boston area regional plan. They do consulting work for cities and towns. And, you know, they, you know, they, they help, they, they're, they're a great community. I think Micah Spahoe said that they, he was.
He was doing it.
Was doing it, but now he's moved over to the Select Board.
Right.
So I, he said, I think it's like three, it's not a heavy lift, it's about.
Three times a year?
Three times a year.
But it's during the day?
I think they do meet in the daytime.
They do meet in the daytime.
In person?
Um, I think it's, I probably.
Used to be.
It used to be in person, but a lot of my things have been virtual.
All right.
So.
So that's the commitment there. Um, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
I am on that at the moment and I would be willing to continue unless somebody else wants to jump in.
Thank you. Anyone want to fight, Ernie, for that?
No.
No, okay. Northwest Park Housing Committee, is this something that happens frequently?
Oh, that was for Lifetime Fitness.
No, this is old, this is old.
So we don't need that anymore, I don't think, yeah.
And the only other one is a liaison to the Land Use Committee.
Okay.
Because Z can, Z Wang, she's on the Land Use Committee. They, I think they recently created a sustainability subcommittee, which is kind of cool, which I, that's awesome. Um, and so, but I, they, I think they meet about once a month. It's on what, downstairs in the annex basement meeting room, it's on a Wednesday at seven.
Okay, all right, so what we have left that we need to fill is Board of Appeals. Board of Appeals.
M A P C.
Land Use and M A P C. So.
Land Use and what is the other one?
Board of Appeals, Land Use and M A P C. Now, M A P C is daytime, so that's probably not going to work for either one of you. Um, Land Use is Wednesday nights and Board of Appeals is Monday, Tuesday nights.
But you, but you don't have to attend the meetings, right?
I mean, you can do it remotely.
You can, yeah, you can sign in remotely, yeah. Their meetings are really short, too.
Where, what's?
Board of Appeals.
Most of the time.
Yeah, I should say, compared to ours, they're very short.
So it's every Tuesday evening you sign in?
Every other, every other, yeah. Twice a month.
Great.
Twice a month, I'm not going to put you on the spot. I'm going to ask you.
The last time you spoke, we had the thing I bet like all the time.
I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, okay, I'll think about it.
Subcommittees we're assigned to.
Yep.
I'd like the two of you to let, get back to me and let me know what you'd be willing to do because we do have subcommittees and it's hard for me to ask somebody else to take on additional ones when we have members that don't have one.
And you're on economic?
Economic Development, yes. So think it over, please get back.
I liked that one three times a year.
Economic is not three times a year.
Definitely not three times.
Oh, I thought you said that was.
M A P C.
No, M A P C is three times a year.